So we are here tonight for a special meeting. Agenda item number one.
Item number one, resolve recognizing the vacancy in the office of mayor as a result of the formal resignation of Shane Bouchard on March 8, 2019 and the filling of the vacancy on that date by the city council president. And the council president has asked me to read the resolve in full just for clarification for members of the public. The resolve reads, whereas on Friday, March 8, 2019, Mayor Shane Bouchard called a media conference at Lewiston City Hall at which city council president Kristen Cludier was present at Mr. Bouchard's request. And whereas at the conference, Shane Bouchard publicly stated, please consider this formal notice that I am resigning from the position of mayor. And whereas upon resignation of the mayor, within 12 months of the next regular municipal election, the charter of the city states that the president of the council shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term as the mayor of the city with all the powers, privileges, and authority of the mayor. And whereas Shane Bouchard recognized at the press conference that the city council president Cludier filled the vacancy of mayor when he gave formal notice of his resignation and promised to work with incoming mayor Kristen Cludier, and she accepted the responsibility of mayor at the press conference. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lewiston that the city council hereby recognizes the resignation of Shane Bouchard from the position of mayor of the city of Lewiston effective March 8, 2019, and that the filling of the vacancy created by that resignation by city council president Cludier.
Thank you, Kathy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion on the council? Councilor Ray.
Could we just be referred to what section of the city charter, uh, the second, third whereas comes from?
Yeah, the chart, the relevant provision of the charter is section 2.07.
Thank you so much.
Anything else from the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number two.
Item number two, swearing in of Kristen Cludier as the mayor of the city of Lewiston. Please come forward.
This is a photo op. I think we have to get behind it. We're not.
I'm at the end of the video.
Okay.
You can repeat after me. I, Kristen, as Cludier.
I, Kristen, as Cludier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Maine.
And of the state of Maine.
And that I faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As mayor for the city of Lewiston.
As mayor for the city of Lewiston.
According to the laws of this state.
According to the laws of this state.
And the charter of the city of Lewiston.
And the charter of the city of Lewiston.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Does the counselor of word one have a motion?
Yes, I move to, move to executive session regarding consultation with the city attorney.
All those in favor?
Associate House Executive.
And just so members of the public know that this executive session will probably take about 30 minutes, so if you're planning to be here for the other parts of the agenda, we'll be out in approximately, up to 30 minutes. Otherwise, you, or if you were just here for the first part, you don't have to stay.
So we are here for a workshop, and the first item is the proposal to review Lake Auburn water quality issues and potential alternatives.
Madam Mayor, I thought it would be useful for us, given the conversations that have been going on and the interest that we've seen from the Mayor of Auburn about the potential for forming committees to look at the issue of water quality in Lake Auburn, to spend a little bit of time, give everyone some background on the situation and things that are going on and alternatives, and what we know and what we may not know. Interestingly, the City of Lewiston and the Auburn Water District have shared rights to use the water from Lake Auburn for domestic purposes. That right goes all the way back to the 1870s when there was special legislation passed by the state legislature that established our rights and the Auburn Water District's rights in the lake. General rule nationally is if you are using surface water for drinking water, you have to provide filtration. That's designed to try to remove stuff from the water to keep bacteria and other kinds of things from sneaking through your system. You can, however, get exemptions from that, or exceptions from that rule, and we have managed to do that for some time, since 1993 or before. We've had an exemption from filtration on Lake Auburn because of its water quality. There are other lakes in Maine that have that same exemption. Bangor has it in Flood's Pond, and the Portland Water District has it in Sebago Lake. The three situations are, however, somewhat different. There's always the possibility that you will lose that exemption, and you can lose that exemption for a number of reasons. The primary issue with Lake Auburn is turbidity, which means cloudiness in the water. If turbidity exceeds a certain level and you put that water through your system into your distribution system, you can lose your waiver because turbidity can mask or hide bacteria or other things that shouldn't be in the water. We don't really know for sure what the status of our exemption is long term. We do know that it has been in place for, what, about 25 years, something like that? We have a recent study that says if we take certain steps, we should be good for at least another 10 years, and in that time can take other actions to extend it even further. One of the major challenges faced in the lake is it's not a large body of water compared, for example, to Sebago Lake, and as a result, the water replacement cycle in the lake is relatively long, five to seven years for the water to turn over in the lake. One of the things that that allows to happen is phosphorus to concentrate in the lake. Phosphorus comes from runoff. It can come from something as simple as fertilizing your front lawn. It comes from pavement. I'm not quite sure how that happens to happen, but when it rains and rain hits asphalt, it picks up phosphorus and sends it into the lake as some of its atmospheric deposition. And you can get it from septic systems that are malfunctioning, or just from other kinds and other sources. As that material, phosphorus, gets into the lake, it can support algae growth. We've had a couple of episodes in 2012, 2011, and this most recent year where we've seen algae growth in the lake. That's because of the phosphorus in the lake. Those events are somewhat different, and I'm not going to get into all the technical stuff about them. Some of it has to do with phosphorus that's deposited and tied up in iron in the bottom of the lake. That was the older one. This one was just the amount of phosphorus in the water that supported algae growth. So anyway, that's the big issue we're dealing with, is algae growth in the lake caused by fault by phosphorus. One of the options, obviously, that's been kicked around is the notion of, well, let's look at putting filtration in on the lake. And I can spend a little bit of time talking about what we do know about what would be required. If we were to put filtration on the lake, we would have to be looking at a plant that was in at least 16 MGD, which meets our peak demand, and if you wanted to allow for a little bit of growth, you might want to look at a 20 million gallon per day of plant. Capital cost for that kind of plant, we've generally been looking at something in the range of $35 to $45 million. There've been a number of estimates. Some of that depends on the nature of the installation, which can vary depending upon the circumstances in the lake. If you check around, there's some examples I found on Google. Grants Pass, Oregon did a 20 million MGD plant in 2015 for $42.7 million. Wichita, Kansas in 2018, a 5.4 MGD plant at $22 million, and so on and so forth. There are a number of examples, and the most recent estimates tend to still be in that range. There's also an estimate of operating cost for a plant like that, which would be in the range of $1.5 to $2 million per year. So, looking at filtration from a cost point of view, there are two elements. You have, obviously, the capital cost, which basically would translate into borrowing the money over a period of time, and then the operating costs. Capital cost can be structured in a number of ways. You can either borrow for 20 years or 30 years. You can structure your debt like a home mortgage, where you make the same payment every month, which effectively ends up primarily paying almost all interest at the start, and then gradually increasing the principal payment. Or you can make a flat principal payment, which holds down your interest costs over time. The net result is you have a range of potential annual first-year costs when it comes to capital costs. Those can range between, effectively, $2.2 million for a 30-year bond with fixed annual payments, or you could go with a 20-year flat principal payment bond. That would be $3.4 million in the first year. The difference being, if you go for the cheapest first year, the overall payments over the life of the bonds are $65 million. If you go with the $3.4 million first-year payment, you bring that total lifetime cost down to $54, $55 million. So you can finance it in different ways, but either way you do it, it's still a pretty significant cost. Then, on top of that, you have to add in the annual operating costs of $1.5 to $2 million. So if you look at the total annual first-year operating costs for capital and operating on a plant like this, you're looking at something in the range of $3.7 to $4.9 million. And if you assume that that would be split between Lewiston and Auburn, which is a whole other subject, you would be looking at, for Lewiston, $1.8 million in additional costs in the first year, on top of our $5.7 million water budget. So, the rate increase you'd be looking at to support that would be in the 32% to 44% increase range, not counting anything else. And recognize that, as you'll see in the budget soon, we don't have to probably have a water rate increase next year, but we're getting close to where we're going to need one anyway. And in water, which is regulated by the PUC, you can't, it's not as easy to put small increases in. Over time, you have to kind of do big ones every once in a while. So, at some point, there'll be another fairly sizable water rate increase just to meet the current situation. I also should point out that some of these costs have been talked about for a long time, and some folks have questioned their validity and indicated that they thought the actual cost could be considerably less. One of the other issues that seems to have been a potential element of the interest in filtration is whether, and the thought that it would, allow for greater recreational use of the lake and/or more development within the watershed in terms of economic development, tax-based development, those kinds of things. What's not clear is the extent to which any of that could actually happen while the lake is still being used as a drinking water lake, even if it has had a filtration plant on it. We do know that, as simply we know, that if the water quality declines, your treatment costs are going to increase, even with a filtration plant. So, you know, algae, for example, as algae blooms occur in the lake, that's going to impact a filtration plant, has impacts on the filters that are used. They can clog the filters. You have to more frequently backwash them. You have larger amounts of material that you have to dispose of. All of those kinds of things can have an impact, and it's not clear how much actually could be done in the watershed while we're still trying to use the lake as a drinking water lake. It's one of the things that if we did get serious about looking at this, it would really need to be dug into, is that to what extent can things continue to, or change in the watershed that might have an impact on water quality. Another thing that would be useful, I think, more for Auburn than necessarily for us, would be an economic analysis. Clearly, for us, it would be worth taking a look at the impact of higher water rates on our utility customers, particularly our larger customers. I know people are not happy whenever any kind of a rate goes up, but if you're looking at a 30% to 44%, 45% rate increase on water, that can be fairly significant and can impact people and can impact businesses. In Auburn's case, I think they would need to do some analysis of, the cost-benefit analysis of additional development or recreational opportunities on the lake against the cost of providing services to new development, and again, the cost implications for its major customers. There's also been some discussion of whether filtration would have been effective against this summer's taste and odor problems in the lake, which, again, to emphasize, did not really represent poor water quality. The water was safe and met all drinking standards throughout that whole period. Basically, simple filtration will not necessarily address that issue. It needs to be coupled with something else. It might be an oxygenation system, or it could be an activated charcoal system, all of which adds cost to the plant. Final thing we need to remember is, given the size of the investment, it's likely if we participate in the capital cost, that we would have to go to a referendum, where the people in the city would have to approve the issuance of bonds. That, I think, could be a difficult sell, given the additional cost impacts we're talking about, and the fact that the recreational benefits are certainly somewhat shared. I'm sure there are Lewiston residents who would like to be able to go over and, you know, go swimming in the lake, or take their canoe and put their foot in the water. So there would be some benefit there, but in terms of development, most of that would obviously occur in Auburn, and any financial income from that development largely go to Auburn, and should all enter into everyone's thinking as we proceed forward on this. So I think that's kind of a general summary of some of the basic facts about this. We will be putting up on our website a variety of studies and background information that has been produced over the years on all of these issues, so that that's available out there for anyone who wants to take a look at it, to get familiar with it.
Tobago Lake, and as a result, the water cycle, replacement cycle in the lake is relatively long, five to seven years for the water to turn over in the lake. One of the things that that allows to happen is phosphorus to concentrate in the lake. Phosphorus comes from runoff. It can come from something as, as simple as fertilizing your, your front lawn. It comes from pavement. I'm not quite sure how that man, happens to hap- happens, but when it rains and rain hits, asphalt, it picks up phosphorus and sends it into the lake, expect some of its atmospheric deposition. And you can get it from, from septic systems that are malfunctioning, or just from other kinds and source, other sources. As, as that material, phosphorus gets into the lake, it can support algae growth. We've had a couple of episodes in 2012, 2011, and, and this most recent year where we've seen algae growth in the lake. That's because of the phosphorus in the lake. Those events are somewhat different, and I'm not going to get into all the technical stuff about them. Some of it has to do with phosphorus that's deposited and tied up in iron in the bottom of the lake. That was the older one. This one was just out, the number, amount of phosphorus in the water that supported algae growth. So anyway, that's the big issue we're dealing with is, is algae growth in the lake caused by fault by phosphorus. One of the options, obviously, that's been kicked around is the notion of, well, let's look at putting filtration in on the lake. And I can spend a send, little bit of time talking about what we do know about what would be required. If we were to put filtration on the lake, we would have to be looking at, at a plant that was in at least sixteen MGD, which meets our peak demand. And if you wanted to allow for a little bit of growth, you might want to look at a twenty million gallon per day of plant. Capital cost for that kind of plant, we've generally been looking at something in the range of thirty-five to forty-five million dollars. There've been a number of estimates. Some of that depends on the nature of the installation, which can vary depending upon the circumstances in the lake. If you check around, there's some examples I found on Google. Grants Pass, Oregon did a twenty million MGD plant in 2015 for forty-two point seven million dollars. Wichita, Kansas in 2018, a five point four MGD plant at twenty-two million, and so on and so forth. There are a number of examples, and more, the most recent estimates tend to still be in that range. There's also an estimate of operating cost for a plant like that, which would be in the range of one and a half to two million dollars per year. So, looking at filtration from a cost point of view, there are two elements. You have, obviously, the capital cost, which basically would translate into borrowing the money over a period of time, and then the operating costs. Capital cost can be structured in a number of ways. You can either borrow for twenty years or thirty years. You can structure your debt like a, like a home mortgage, where you make the same payment every month, which effectively ends up primarily paying almost all interest at the start, and then gradually increasing the principal payment. Or you can make a, a flat principal payment, which holds down your interest costs over time. The net result is you have a range of potential annual first year costs when it comes to, to capital costs. Those can range between two, effectively, two point two million dollars for a thirty year bond with fixed annual payments. Or you could go with a twenty year flat principal payment bond, that would be three point four million in the first year. The difference being, if you go for the cheapest first year, the overall payment, payments over the life of the bonds are sixty-five million dollars. If you go with the three point four million dollar first year payment, you bring that total lifetime cost down to fifty-four, fifty-five million dollars. So you can finance in different ways, but either ways, either, any way you do it, it's still a pretty significant cost. Then on top of that, you have to add in the annual operating costs of one and a half to, to two million dollars. So if you look at the total annual first year operating costs for capital and operating on a plant like this, you're looking at something in the range of three point seven to four point nine million dollars. And if you assume that that would be split between Lewiston and Auburn, which is a whole other subject, you would be looking at, for Lewiston, one point eight million dollars in additional costs in the first year, on top of our five point seven million dollar water budget. So, the rate increase you'd be looking at to support that would be in the thirty-two to forty-four percent increase range, not counting anything else. And recognize that, as you'll see in the budget soon, we don't have to probably have a water rate increase next year, but we're getting close to where we're going to need one anyway. And in the water, which is regulated by the PUC, you can't, it's not as easy to put small increases in. Over time, you have to kind of do big ones every once in a while. So, at some point, there'll be another fairly sizable water rate increase just to meet current, the current situation. I also should point out that some of these costs have been talked about for a long time, and some folks have questioned their validity, and indicated that they thought the actual cost could be considerably less. One of the other issues that seems to have been a potential element of, of the interest in filtration is whether, and the thought that it would allow for greater recreational use of the lake, and/or more development within the watershed, in terms of economic development, tax-based development, those kinds of things. What's not clear is the extent to which any of that could actually happen, while the lake is still being used as a drinking water lake, even if it has had a filtration plant on it. We do know that as, as simply, we know that if the water quality declines, your treatment costs are going to increase, even with a filtration plant. So, you know, algae, for example, as algae blooms occur in the lake, that's going to impact a filtration plant, has impacts on the filters that are used. They can clog the filters. You have to more frequently backwash them. You have larger amounts of material that you have to dispose of. All of those kinds of things can have an impact, and it's not clear how much actually could be done in the watershed while we're still trying to use the lake as a drinking water lake. It's one of the things that if we did get serious about looking at this, it would really need to be dug into, is that how, to what extent can things continue to, or change in the watershed that might have an impact on water quality? Another thing that would be useful, I think more for Auburn than necessarily for us, would be an economic analysis. Clearly, for us, it would be worth taking a look at the impact of higher water rates on our utility customers, particularly our larger customers. I know people are not happy whenever any kind of a rate goes up, but if you're looking at a thirty to forty-four, forty-five percent rate increase on, on water, that can be fairly significant, and can impact people, and can impact businesses. In Auburn's case, I think they would need to do some analysis of, the cost benefit analysis, initial of additional development or recreational opportunities on the lake against the cost of providing services to, to new development, and again, the cost, the cost implications for its major customers. There's also been some discussion of whether filtration would have, have been effective against this summer's taste and odor problems in the lake, which again, to emphasize, did not really represent poor water quality. The water was safe and met drinks, all drinking standards throughout that whole period. Basically, filtration, simple filtration will not necessarily address that issue. Needs to be coupled with something else. It might be oxygenation system, or it could be an activated charcoal system, all of which adds cost to the, to the plant. Final thing we need to remember is, given the size of the investment, it's likely if we are participate, if we participate in the capital cost, that we would have to go to referendum, where the people in, in the city would have to approve the issuance of bonds. That, I think, could be a difficult sell, given the additional cost impacts we're talking about, and the fact that the recreational benefits are certainly somewhat shared. Sure, there are Lewiston residents who would like to be able to go over and, you know, go swimming in the lake, or take their canoe and put their foot in the water. So there would be some benefit there, but in terms of development, most of that would obviously occur in Auburn, and, and any financial income from that development largely go to Auburn, and should all enter into everyone's thinking as we proceed forward on this. So I think that's kind of a general summary of some of the basic facts about this. We will be putting up on our website, a variety of studies and background information that has been produced over the years on all of these issues, so that that's available out there for anyone who wants to take a look at it, to get familiar with this situation. To some extent, we'll also try to put some summaries up there, so you don't have to read through the forty-page engineering report that's difficult for non-engineers to understand. So the issue really before us tonight is, is with the interest that Auburn has expressed, or at least the mayor of Auburn has expressed in forming this committee, how do we want to proceed? One of the things, one of the options is to simply for us to wait and see what Auburn decides to do, and then have some conversations with them about how we might want to work with that or not. So we could defer until they, we see what they have to say. We could certainly, if we wanted, proceed with our own committee. I think that would be premature, until we know for sure what Auburn would like to do. And then we might look to, there are other groups that have an interest in this. Obviously, the Auburn Water District has an interest in this as the other owner of, of water rights in the lake. We have a Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, that theoretically ought to be the group, perhaps, that's, that's somewhat involved in this because of their focus on the watershed and, and protecting the lake. So I think we need to work our way through, through that going forward. But that's kind of the range of options I see at the current time. And I suspect I would recommend that we simply wait at this point to see what direction the city of Auburn decides to take, and then have conversations with them about whether and to what extent we want to work within the framework that they're putting together. Be glad to answer any questions. Kevin's here as our water expert, and Director Doughty from Public Works is here as well. So be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any discussion on the council? Uh, Councilor Ray?
I would just agree with Ed's assessment that, you know, the Watershed Protection Commission has been doing this work for some time now, with representatives from the city of Lewiston and myself, and also a citizen representative, and then also the Auburn Water District is represented there, which are the two rights holders. There's also people from communities around Lewiston, Auburn, who also contribute to the lake. So I think that is the most appropriate place to keep this currently. Yep.
So just, I, based upon what you just said, I just want to clarify. So, in terms of rights to the water, it's the city of Lewiston and the Auburn Water District, not the city of Auburn?
That is correct. That the, the enabling legislation that was passed back in the eighteen seventies by the state legislature, basically indicated that the Auburn Water District and the city of Lewiston's water, I forget what they called it at that time, Water Division, Water Department, Water Function, would be the two groups that had rights to use water from the lake for domestic purposes. The city of Auburn is not one of those, although the city of Auburn does appoint the, the Board of the Auburn Water Trustees. There's Board of the Water, Auburn Water District Trustees.
And my understanding is that they had a conversation about this at their meeting on, was it last night? Or this, their city council tabled the resolve, correct?
Yeah, that was the, the con, I think that conversation was a week ago.
Maybe it was a week ago.
It was last Monday. They talked about that, and at that time, they had a resolve in front of them to basically provide staff support to, to the committee that the mayor's talking about establishing. That resolve was tabled. I suspect it will be coming back up in front of Auburn, not in, not too distant future. Mayor Levesque has, his most recent proposal, there's been a number of discussions going on. At one point, there was a discussion of a joint committee. Most recent discussion was, was a proposal that each city establish its own committee, and those committees would meet jointly to discuss the issue. But I'm not exactly sure where things are going to end up, and I think we would obviously need some more conversations with, with Auburn about what they're intending to do if they do decide to go forward with something.
Thank you. So are we all okay with waiting to see what Auburn?
Yeah.
Great. Does that give you what you need?
Okay. Yep, that's what we needed for tonight. Thank you very much.
Yep. So, next up is a presentation of a framework for local regulations of medical and adult use marijuana.
Good evening. So, I am back. To remind you folks, we talked about this back in December, on a couple of occasions. At that time, in December, we were, the council opted to not allow medical marijuana uses, so the ones that we do have in the community right now are grandfathered, with the exception of anybody that wants to have a caregiver grow. Those are still allowed as a matter of right. We've taken no action on adult use marijuana. And when we last spoke with you folks back in February, the thought was that we would potentially regulate both of these uses as one, one use group, one, one category. So the idea tonight is to kind of go over some rough ideas to see if you folks are in favor in the direction that staff is talking about, get some input from you folks before we actually start drafting any ordinance or licensing language. Just to recap, medical marijuana, or I should say, adult use marijuana, that involves cultivation, products, manufacturing facilities, testing, and stores. There's also a category for nurseries, where they can actually grow up to a thousand square feet and have some retail component with that. And then you have your medical marijuana facilities, which include caregivers, dispensaries, testing facilities, manufacturing facilities. So you'll see in the memo that I provided you folks, we're suggesting that we kind of consolidate all these uses, both caregivers and adult use into basically one, one group. So cultivation facilities, and while I've, I've noted here under medical use marijuana, while they don't have a definition for cultivation facilities, the thought would be, that would be caregiver operations, anybody that's growing marijuana. We would just put that all under a category of marijuana cultivation. Manufacturing facilities, great, we'd have that, both cat, both use groups limited to manufacturing. Testing facilities for both adult and medical, simple testing facilities. Stores for both into one category. Nurseries, we would have as a category, and then dispensaries, we'd have as a category. So, in doing this, we would come up with a, a number of districts. And we've noted that we currently allow industrial and light industrial uses in a number of districts, and those would be the same districts that we allow manufacturing, cultivation, testing, nurseries, and dispensaries. If you can have an industrial, light industrial use in certain zoning districts, we seem to think that it makes sense to allow cultivation, testing, those types of things. And we've listed those districts here, industrial, urban enterprise, mill, highway business, and office service. And I'll show you a map, which is incredibly busy and needs to be refined, but it'll give you a sense of what these areas that we're talking about. Marijuana stores, again, the thought would be both adult use and recreational, and we allow retail in a variety of zoning districts, and you see those listed out in front of you here. So the thought is, if you can have a retail operation of any kind, maybe we should be allowing retail marijuana and a medical marijuana retail in those same districts, with the exception that there would be performance standards around that. So it's not as though that you would just be able to do retail as a matter of right, like you could a convenience store, or, you know, a supermarket or something to that effect, but there'd be additional performance standards with that. We'll talk about that. The one exception to that, you'll note, is downtown residential neighborhood conservation B districts. Those both allow retail uses today, but we don't think that would necessarily be appropriate for any type of marijuana use, because while those districts do allow retail uses, they're predominantly residential in nature. It's kind of like small neighborhood stores that you would find in those zoning districts. So where really the, the, the regulation of this comes up is with performance standards. And the thought is to go through these, and feel free to interrupt me at any point if you guys have questions as we hit each one, because it may be easier than waiting to the end. With respect to odor, we just need to, we come up with some solid language, and you folks actually, back in December, when we took the no-action language to not opt in, you actually put some additional language in back at that point to give us a little bit more teeth with respect to enforcement of odor, because quite frankly, that's probably one of the most common complaints we get between planning code enforcement and the police department, about different operations and the odor from them. While I think we have some teeth now in our ordinance, the, the idea would be to really beef it that up, making sure that they have air handling and treatment equipment necessary, make sure that it's confined to the premises, not detectable off this property, basically make sure that it's not creating a nuisance. Another requirement would be that all these use groups, all of them that we've identified on the previous page, it'd all be in a fully enclosed, permanent structure. Within the last two weeks, I've had people approach me about having portable extraction and portable grow operations. We don't allow either of those right now, right, because of the action you folks took, but if we do move forward with an ordinance, do we want to allow, do we want to allow people to have like a construction trailer or a pod-type container that's, that's available for either grows, extractions, testing? Apparently, there's a whole market out there where you can have a container to opt off at your house, and it's already fit out for all of that work, and you can start your operations within days. Something I wasn't aware of. Do we want to regulate that? If we do, I would suggest that it has to be fully enclosed and permitted, so in other words, this, this trailer isn't here today, and six months from now, it's at another location, you know? Locational requirements. This is where I'm going to show you a busy map. And let me go...
Dave, while you're pulling that up, what is a child nursery?
I'm sorry?
What is a child nursery?
Oh.
Is that a term I'm not familiar with?
Well, I wanted, yeah, nurseries. I, 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 I wanted to make the distinction so we weren't confusing it from nurseries for a grow operation, because as a, in this document, we're referring to nurseries.
Oh, like a garden.
Exactly.
Or marijuana.
Yeah, so a school nursery.
It's an odd phrase.
Yeah, no, I guess we could have chose a different way to, to explain that there.
Nursery school, maybe?
Okay, thank you.
Wow, yeah, that's like too obvious, right? So, so this map here is pretty busy. I'll talk about what we've done, and then how this map tries to show that. We started off with the thought of having required setbacks of a thousand feet from schools, religious facilities, daycare, daycare, daycare facilities, child nurseries, and city-owned parks and open space. So that's consistent with basically safe zones that you folks have already adopted in other sections of our ordinance. The distinct, the one distinction that should be made is safe zones are a thousand feet for alcohol, and you folks have adopted language similar to safe zones for, what am I trying to say?
Drugs?
What's that?
For drugs.
Not drugs, but the drugs is a thousand feet, it's the sexual offenders, excuse me. You guys reduced that to seven fifty. So what you're seeing on this map here, with all the yellow circles on here, is a thousand-foot buffer. That's consistent with one provision that already exists in the ordinance, but if you folks felt the need to reduce it to seven fifty, there's already language that exists with that, too. We can do whatever we want, right? But the thought was that we want to come up with some provisions that already exist, so there's some consistency among different provisions of our ordinance. We're making it clear, too, how setbacks would be measured. I don't want to have the discussion with any operators or property owners as to how we measure, so we're talking about coming up with specific language as to how we're measuring to these establishments. Another, another performance standard would be three hundred foot setback from any legally non-conforming or conforming residential use, and/or any residential zoning district. That's similar language that already exists with our adult business establishments and drinking places. It's hard to see on this map, but that greenish teal color that you see up there, that, where I'm kind of like putting my cursor on it, so all these areas that you see colored in that bluish-green teal area, that's, that's our residential zoning districts. At the last council meeting, we talked in February, there was some thought about having setbacks from both residential uses and residential zoning districts, so when you factor that all in, you know, we're only further prohibiting where these locations can be. So, to be clear, you can't have any non-residential use in a residential zone, but if you put a buffer from that residential zone, you're just pushing it further. And all of our corridors, our commercial corridors are great examples of that. Lisbon Street, Main Street, Sabata Street, they're very narrowly zoned commercial. You know, you go in a hundred feet or so on any of those zone, on any of those roads, and it turns into residential in a hurry. So, the council's going to need to decide, well, great, if I have a commercial property on Sabata Street, for example, it clearly allows residential uses, and we're generally okay with marijuana uses in that district of some sort, are we okay that the neighbor behind it may be zoned residential or in residential use, or do we want to have a buffer from that? When you put that buffer onto this map, it makes big, you know, it takes a lot, a lot of properties out of, out of, out of the equation for availability. Minimum distance between marijuana store, nursery, dispenser, and the other, any other two marijuana stores of the same, the same zoning district shall be five hundred feet away from each other. This is, again, same language that we apply towards our drinking establishments. And I know in the past, I've had counselors and planning board members say that we should actually relax that standard with respect to drinking establishments, because, for example, right now, if you're on Lisbon Street downtown, and you have two drinking establishments, and you want to put the third one on Lisbon Street, it has to be five hundred feet away from any other two establishments. Do we want to have that same type of standard for marijuana uses? It's an example of being consistent with existing language. It absolutely achieves the goal, if, if that's the desire, of having separation between these establishments, not having too many of them clustered in one area. So, that's something to, to consider, and it would, it certainly would have, again, the impact, if, if we're looking to limit locations of any of these types of uses, you folks have a number of tools and options before you.
Dave, can I interrupt on that?
Absolutely.
So that, obviously, that does not apply to the exempted ones that are already in place, because we, there's a huge cluster.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, like, when you, when you get into that downtown area, you have all these different types of retail. Something that we didn't talk about in this, because it's going to involve more thought, is what do we want to do with existing establishments, non-conforming establishments? Do we want to continue to allow them? Are they clearly not going to be allowed, and they're just limited to the current license holder? Or do we tie it to the use? Right now, the language that's been adopted by the council, it's tied to the license operator. So any of the establishments we have in town right now, if they close shop, if they go out of business, they are out of luck. They won't be able to reestablish. We could change that to say, well, gate, the, the location is grandfathered, so if I'm a licensed caregiver, and I decide to sell my business to somebody, they could continue that operation there. Can't do that now, but maybe we want to do that.
Can we also just, it's in the memo, too, can we not use the term grandfathered? It has some implications, I think, that may not be intentional, but if we could just switch to the language of exempted, or something like that?
Absolutely. No, technically, we should be saying non-conforming, non-conforming use. I throw that in there because a lot of people will be saying, well, what do you mean non-conforming? Well, you know grandfather, oh, yeah, I know what that means, but absolutely, I'm just , we can, we can go that direction. More than one marijuana business, maybe co- co-located or operated within the same building as long as the ordinance applications are met, and it's not being operated as a collective. So the thought being is, I could possibly be a caregiver, and I could be a grower, and I also want to have a retail presence in the same store. Are we okay with that? We currently allow that in a number of application establishments now, where we have a grow, and a caregiver grow, and a retail presence in the same building. We don't have to do that. We can say, hey, you can only do each use separately from one another, if, if that's the desire. Limiting the size of businesses and stores, there are some communities that actually put square footage requirements on the size of any of these establishments, to make sure you don't end up with, you know, some type of superstore. Same with the limit of hours of operation. I, I don't necessarily have a, a feeling on that. There is some language out there that exists already with establishments that sell alcohol from a state perspective, so you could tie it into that if you feel that there is a, a connection of some sort, that, you know, you can't sell liquor beyond a certain hour, and can't start until a certain hour. We could do that with these types of uses as well, if we wanted to. We touched upon this briefly last time, drive-through and home delivery. We don't want to allow any drive-throughs, we don't want to allow any home deliveries, with the exception of caregiver operations. That's pretty much allowed now. If you're a caregiver and you want to deliver medication to somebody, you, you, you can do that, and the thought is you'd be allowed to do that going forward. Security, we have some current provisions now, but this is really, what's in here is really beefing it up. Should note, some of this language, you know, I've been looking at other communities to see what they've been doing. Auburn, South Portland, Bangor, Auburn spent a, a great deal of time, and some of this language is taken from them and kind of massaged in a, in a manner that we think might be more appropriate for us. Signs, I know, in addition to you folks asking about buffers from, you know, parks and residential areas, you folks also raised some questions about signs. We can put language in there that limits the, the area advertising towards the actual product, so what we're proposing here... here is that you could have a sign requirements that may use images or marijuana plants or parts thereof, as long as it doesn't exceed 20% of the sign face. There's also a suggestion of putting in the universal, like, green, looks like a, a red cross, except it's a green cross, making sure, so it's clear to people that this is not your typical retail establishment, but maybe that they're actually selling marijuana products there. Criteria to disqualify an applicant, and talking with Chief O'Malley, we really like to beef up the language there as to when someone is submitting an application, us, us being able to deny it from go, not even going through the whole exercise here. So some of these recommendations here with respect to felony within the last 10 years, misdemeanor convictions, providing false information, inability to demonstrate insurance, tax delinquency, these would all be things to basically make sure that these guys are on the up and up when they're establishing new businesses in the community. With respect to the fee structure, we currently charge $550 annually for each caregiver, so if, if there's more than one caregiver in a location, each one of them has to get a license, each one of them is paying that 550. When you start looking at other communities and what they're doing, and is, they're charging a lot more than we are, and I think it's pretty easy to justify that as well, given the amount of time that we have invested in these establishments, I mean, these are inspections that are happening, usually one or two inspections to get them going between police, fire, planning code enforcement, the electrical inspector, and then an annual inspection along with that as well. So, certainly from the police department, they're not usually inspecting facilities, you know, as code enforcement does, you know, that's something that's part of their daily routine, but to have the police involved, that's something that they're not typically doing, and they would be involved a great deal more with. Exemptions, we're not interested in necessarily regulating people that have grown for themselves, adult use or medical, I, I don't want to know about it, I mean, if they're grown at home, have at it, as long as they're meeting state requirements, and that it's an enclosed structure and they're, and they're dealing with odor, yeah.
I had a question on that, I mean, if this is something that grows in the sunlight, why would you want it to enclose it, just for the odor issues and things like that?
Odor and safety, no, the state allows you to grow outside, but it does have to be in some type of enclosure, enclosure, you know, in a fenced-in area.
Okay, fenced-in enclosure, as opposed to, I, I'm visualizing a totally enclosed structure.
Which you should be, because what we're, we're recommending is that it would be an enclosed structure, it's in your basement, it's in the shed, it's in the garage, something that can clearly control the odor, you're not going to be able to do that if you have a simple fenced-in, you know, garden or, you know, a hoop house or something like that. Odor complaints are what we get from the residential areas, I think the chief could attest to that as well, I mean, that's, that's where we...
And even in the growing phase?
Even in the growing phase, well, I mean, at some point, the plant does not produce any odor, and yet, and then it does. So, I, you know, I don't want to be, it's not in staff's best interest, I don't think, to be telling people, well, it's okay for the plant to be outside during this phase, but then you got to relocate it into a, an odor-controlled environment at another part. We'd rather just not go there. So as I noted, I mean, we need to talk about nonconformance, we got to talk about appeals, provisions, and things like that, but I don't want to go too far down that road if you folks have serious concerns or comments with respect to the performance standards themselves. I just want to focus on the map for one more minute here, oops, and that's like, you know, a little closer than you guys want to see, right? It's my little hand here. So, the intent of this map, again, you know, yellow areas is showing a thousand-foot buffers, then there's a 300-foot buffer from any residential zoning, and this map here is showing the districts that we would allow retail operations in, so you have those six districts that we would allow it in, and when you start looking at this map, there isn't a lot of areas, so like, I'll circle with the curse of where you could do a retail operation if we take into consideration the buffers we're talking about. You have areas on outer Lisbon Street that you might be able to do, you have some areas around Exit 80 and down like by like Geiger Brothers is, and you know, there's small pockets along Lincoln Street, there's a tiny pocket on, on Sabata Street, where I'm circling there, that's a great example of, you have a commercial zoning district, but the residential butts both sides of it, so your, your, your footprint immediately disappears. Out of Sabata Street, there's some spots out there, and then there's some spots on outer Main Street as well. Uh, what else am I going to do? Same thing, I mean, there's such subtle differences in this that you folks aren't going to probably notice, this map here is the zones that we would allow, the, the non-residential, excuse me, the non-retail uses, so cultivation, manufacturing, nurseries, testing dispensaries, so instead of six zoning districts, now we're looking at five zoning districts. And so when you look at the, the map again, where are those areas? Well, they're maybe a little bit bigger, again, you have outer Lisbon Street, you know, you have some areas in the industrial park, areas around Exit 80, Gender and Business Park, industrial area, you know, that's, that's, in my, if there's something that's clear about this whole thing, it's like, that seems like a totally appropriate area to have testing, manufacturing-type facilities. Maybe some spots on outer Sabata Street, maybe some spots on outer Main Street. But as you can see, I mean, things get, you know, your areas here are disappearing pretty quickly, right, because you have these large buffers. If you folks are comfortable with that, you know, that's fine, it'll make it more important for us to talk about the nonconformance language, because all of those establishments we have are really in the downtown area, and we need to know whether or not you folks want to continue to allow those to occur or not. Let me do one more thing here. Yeah, I mean, and I apologize, because the thought, this is more of a working document for, for staff, just to figure out where are all these spots, but if you zoom in on the downtown area, wherever you see a green triangle, that's a grow that we have licensed regularly, wherever you see a cross, that's retail, and then the stars are both, this blue star is a grow and a retail, so, yellow areas, if we consider setbacks from schools and daycares, if we took daycares out of this, and there's approximately 63 daycares, if we took daycares out of this, this map is going to change quite a bit, and that might be something you folks want to consider, because a lot of these daycares, we could break it down, but you'll know, like, a lot of the daycares are like in residential areas, it's not going to happen there anyway, right, so the map would look lot, look less busy, but it doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have more uses allowed in the community. But I, I think it's going to be important, I'm, I'm certainly going to want to come back to you folks and figure out, should we be grandfathering the establishments we have downtown? Because if you ask us to come forward with buffers that are basically the same as sex offenders, drugs, and alcohol, as you can see downtown, you're not going to have any of these types of uses, and if that's what you folks want, great, we'll go that direction. Lastly, I haven't really talked to any caregivers about this yet, because I kind of wanted to talk to you folks about it, we obviously need to get some input from them, you know, in talking with the chief, the thought is, we probably just call him up and have our own type of workshop with him and say, hey, these are the kind of performance standards we're thinking about, which ones do you like, which ones don't you like? And then we could potentially come back to you, you know, with the input from you folks as well, so we have a balance of what they've considered, what you guys have considered, and what staff thinks is the best idea. Go ahead.
Counselor Lycan?
Yeah, I wondered, one of the criteria that would automatically disqualify an applicant from obtaining a local license, including a felony condition within the last 10 years, wouldn't it be the nature of that conviction would be more important than...
We, we have had several instances where folks with felonies have applied for licenses and we've denied them, and it's been appealed, and the difficulty is that there is no clear definition of related, what, what's related to the operation? So, my fear, and I think staff's fear, is that's going to become a situation where we deny, we go to planning, we go to the Board of Appeals, and sometimes it's approved, sometime, sometimes it's supported, sometimes it's overturned, and it may, it's going to be difficult to be consistent. So we thought a nice, clear, clean, bright-line distinction would be defensible. What it does, what, what, what felony is reasonably related?
Right, to the...
What, I'm, I'm interested, what felony, I mean, murder obviously would necessarily be. You know, clearly, if there was a, a drug offense, unrelated to marijuana, that might be, might be an example, but it's just a fuzzy distinction that creates all kinds of heartburn and difficulties?
We've had appeals before where someone may have had the license suspended, and, you know, the question is, is how is that rationally related to a tattoo operator or a taxi cab driver? You know, it seems like it would be much more clear for an appeal board to say, well, it's rationally related if he's a cab driver because he was, has his license suspended for, I don't know, an OUI or something like that, is that rationally related to a tattoo operator? It's a little more gray. This would kind of get rid of that gray, so we could avoid that discussion before the, before the Board of Appeals.
Counselor.
Along that line, does the state provide any guidance? I'm not, is that where the rationally related wording comes from?
No, I mean, and, and I'm somewhat speaking out of turn, but I mean, that's, that's, that's legal speak for when they're, when they're gonna, when you have to make that connection as far as, is it rationally related, is there a nexus test that goes along with this to make sure? The state's not going to give us any guidance with that, it, it's going to be an attorney, you know, our attorney, and I don't even know that it would necessarily be our attorney, because our attorney is going to, would be advising the board to make sure they make the right decision, they're not necessarily going to tell them whether or not a relationship exists. The defendant or the license holder, they could come in and they could say, yeah, it is rationally, or it is not rationally related, don't take away my license.
Well, this is a little off-topic then, but would you, in the future, be suggesting that we adopt that language in terms of taxi operators and tattoo operators, too, then, to clarify that? Or is that just for the marijuana?
I think so, but I'd probably defer to the chief with respect to that, because a lot of this is, you know, really on the law enforcement side.
Could we ask the chief?
So, chief, can you also just give us an idea of what constitutes, like, what falls within the felony?
Well, I can tell you, I, I got this information from, I think it was Colorado, a couple of the states that already have the marijuana laws in terms of what would prevent somebody from getting a license. I had, I think I spoke to you folks back in December, how I had gone to several of the marijuana, medical marijuana stores, and the, and I think it would be a good idea if we did get those folks in here, so you could listen to what they say, because they want to do this the right way, they don't want to have people who have felony convictions who are going to make them look bad, I mean, they talked about some of the other establishments where they're just selling to anybody who walks into the, into the business, so they're smoking in there, that, they want to do this the right way, they want to have their business, but they want to have, make sure that they're following the rules, and everybody's following the rules. It's very difficult for us to say what is the crime that's rationally related to it, you know, if someone is convicted of manslaughter or murder, or, you know, I just don't want to go in there, I mean, if you want a less than the amount of time, counsel license, I mean, that's what we're presenting to you now, instead of 10 years, go eight, it's, it's up to you what you want to do, but it's very difficult for us in the police department, you know, we've had issues of somebody comes from out of state, trying to find out what their criminal record is, that's been an issue that we have to have them supply us with their, what their criminal record is, if it's not main. It gets to be a little confusing and what, you know, then we end up having these Board of Appeals and hearings, and, you know, our city attorney's saying, yes, it's rationally related, but then the Board of Appeals saying it's not rationally related, I think that was happened on our, one of our last appeals, it wasn't Board of, it was Board of Appeals. So it gets a little convoluted for us in terms of, it would be much easier if you just said felony conviction, whatever amount of time you folks want to go with, that would be fine, and I, I would be surprised if we had a lot of the people who were following the rules that are in place right now speak against this, this rule of having people with the felony convictions.
Felony convictions are mostly violent crimes, is that...
Well, they, it, it all depends, if it's, whatever the legislature has to be more than a year in prison, so it can be a fraud, it can be a theft, it can be driving offenses, you know, if somebody is injured or someone's killed, a manslaughter charge, but yes, a lot of times, they are, they are crimes of violence, you know, domestic violence with strangulation is a felony, you know, but, you know, sexual assault is a felony, it all depends on, you know, the instance, so it, it varies, but you can have somebody who's, you know, steals hundreds of thousands of dollars from somebody, and that's a felony charge. But I just think it goes to what we want to invite for business owners into the city of Lewiston, and that's up to you folks, you know, we will make some recommendations, too, you guys obviously make the ultimate decision of, of who we want to open up businesses here in Lewiston.
David, what's the 10-year, what's the model you used on that?
With respect to 10 years?
Yeah.
That's the language that the chief had found from doing, was it Colorado?
Yeah, I believe it was Colorado, yes.
Thank you.
So, Dave, one of the recommendations that I had made previous to tonight was that you reach out to Corey Brown at Healthy Underscotten.
And we did, actually.
Okay, so...
Yep, we've, we've met with...
Some of this is...
Yep, we met with Ed Barrett, the chief, and I met with Corey, she's been involved with some of Auburn's ordinance, Auburn, for those aren't aware, they've, they've spent a lot of time and effort and, and money really drafting something up, given where they were, because they really weren't open for business, and they were, and then they weren't, and so they've, they've done a good job as far as modeling an ordinance, Healthy Underscotten was part of that process, we talked to her to get her feel on it. One of the things that she mentioned in Auburn, and I haven't talked recently with Auburn, although they did meet with us a few months ago to share with us their draft, was the whole safe zone setback, which is really the yellow dots that you're seeing on this map here. Again, safe zones would be from, from parks, open spaces, schools, that type of thing, the only difference on here is wherever you see a star, we've included daycares and that, so if you imagine a, a yellow circle not being around a star, in Auburn, apparently, they either didn't do safe zones or it's a much smaller setback, so that's something that apparently was, you know, debated over in Auburn, but, but we did meet with her and she, you know, shared her thoughts and comments.
Other discussion, Counselor Mark?
Regarding the map, is that on the website?
It isn't, I didn't have it produced in time, but we can certainly put it on the website.
It's probably not interactive, it's just a flat photo.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you would navigate it just like I am.
You couldn't click on something and have it change?
No, unfortunately, no.
Okay, thank you.
So, it'd be great if there's anything on this list that I guess is alarming or concerning to you, that you want staff to provide, add some more thought about, if you're prepared tonight to let me know that, great, if you're not, and you want to shoot me an email and let me know, that would be great, because I'm expecting you folks are going to want me to come back at some point, and I'd like to make sure that we're, you know, we're not going to hit a home run the first time, but at the same time, it would be nice to get some direction.
So I'm just wondering, you know, both you and the chief referenced talking to caregivers, and I'm wondering what the process is for that?
It can be whatever process we want it to be, but the thought at this point would be, we have contact information for all of these caregivers.
Well, I guess I'm looking at to the city administration...
I would recommend that staff meet with them first.
Okay.
Yeah.
And get their comments and feedback, and then we can certainly, at the point where we, we have something further to bring back to the council, we can also have a summary of the reactions we received and what, if anything, resulted from the comments, what's changed, and of course, they would always have the opportunity at those sessions to be here also. We could, we could share with them this document that Dave produced and kind of get their input as well, of all their concerns and...
Counselor Mark?
So, what are we required to permit by the state legislation?
You don't have to do anything, if you choose not to, you don't have to do anything.
Caregivers have to be allowed, that's it.
Excuse me, caregivers, that's true.
That's what I was thinking, because I, I'm not interested in adult use marijuana stores, and particularly in certain zones that I do see already templated, and I would hope that this, when this does come back to the council, it's piece by piece, not just one great big thing that would make it hard to vote for or against, but piece by piece.
And it would be good to, you, the council certainly could regulate, we could, the council could choose, we're going to allow medical retail, but they don't want to, you don't want to allow adult use retail.
There'll be some grandfathering there or...
Well, we would need to discuss that, but I mean, going forward, if new ordinance was adopted, you folks might say, hey, you know, we don't want any adult use in town at all, except maybe testing and manufacturing or something, but as far as sales, we don't want any sales, we just want to limit it to medical. You folks legally can do that, that's not a problem. I believe you can as well, is it both with adult use? I guess we probably don't know yet on adult use, but with medical, you can actually limit the number of locations as well. I'm not sure that... I'm not sure that we want to go that route. For example, communities are adopting ordinances that are saying no more than six establishments in the community. That is an option. I don't know that we would necessarily want to do that. I mean, that, that, that certainly works. That's, it's something you folks can consider. I think it would be more prudent to look at, you know, performance standards because if you folks are concerned, you know, either we're okay with these or we're not. And then great, what are those standards that would allow them? And basically they, they're going to be driven by meeting those standards.
Counselor.
So a question on locational requirements, bullet point three and four. Do those go together? I'm not understanding how they interact with each other.
Three and four, so the first one, the minimum distance between the marijuana store and nurseries?
Mm-hmm.
With the 500 feet?
Yep.
And then the second one being co-located. So the first one would be if you're just going to have an individual, individual business. The third one has to be so many feet away from the other one. But if you want to co-locate, I'm going to be both a grower and a store.
Okay.
I could have it in one location.
Okay.
And somebody else could do the same thing within 500 feet. But that third co-location would have to be over 500 feet away.
Okay, so we already have some non-conforming?
Absolutely.
Well, um.
I would guess the lower Lisbon.
I mean, on this map, it looks like they're non-conforming, but in reality, I mean, you probably have, there's probably over 500 feet distance between the third establishment. We, I think most people know we have two establishments practically across the street from each other on Lisbon Street. So under this language, that would be allowed. The third one would have to be 500 feet away. And I'm pretty sure they're well over 500 feet away, those other establishments in that area.
And then I just wanted to comment, these performance standards are quite tight, so I feel supportive of moving forward with those. I also wanted to express that the fee structure recommendations seem more appropriate than what currently is in place, not just for the startup fees, but it also seems that these operations might be more subject to theft or to possible fire issues. We saw that on College Street a couple of years ago. And so I think the way that these businesses are interacting with the city should be at a slightly higher cost, unfortunately. But there does seem to be a really big startup process. And so as that goes over time, I guess it would be helpful for the council to kind of be informed of that too, if it becomes more burdensome to staff. Because there's a lot of departments involved, which I don't think is always the case, but it would be helpful to have that feedback.
Did you get all that, Dave?
Sorry.
I did.
Web port.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions? Tell them next. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
So before we move on to agenda, item number three, I just want to make sure that everyone that's here is here for the discussion concerning soberhouse regulations because we don't typically do public, like general public comment during workshops. So I want to make sure that the folks that are here, if they're wanting to make public comment, it would be related to the soberhouse regulations. Is that? Great, thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. I was asked to put together information and I have before you a memo with some additional supplemental information. In general, this memo describes existing conditions, existing regulations and licensing. Gets into describing what soberhouses are, some legal issues, and then looking ahead to whether this is a significant concern, issue to you and the community and whether there should be something done about it, what could be done. So I'll do my best to try to keep this moving. I know it's been a long evening so far, but some of the things that obviously the opioid addiction and other addictions are really hurting our community lots of places in our country. And when you think about addiction and recovery, it's good to keep in mind that there's a treatment phase of that and a recovery component to dealing with addiction. So keep that in mind to some other points I'll probably keep repeating as I go through this. The addiction recovery treatments that are out there right now, we have an outpatient addictive treatment clinics, which is one of the things that is currently being regulated and licensed. We also have group care homes that deal with over eight persons. And then we have community living arrangements, which are under eight persons. And all of these facilities that I just mentioned are all licensed by the state of Maine. That's something also I think you need to keep in mind. So group care facilities are boarding care facilities, meaning that people live and stay there. Again, this is, group care facilities are for more than eight individuals. This can be limited, this can be situations like group homes, halfway homes, congregate homes, but they don't include foster homes. They're also, again, are licensed by the state. Group care facilities are both licensed by the city and then also regulated through our zoning ordinance. There, our licensing for the city is in the Code of Ordinances, chapter 22. And the zoning ordinance deals with group homes as a conditional use, which means that has to be approved by the planning board, at least in a certain number of zoning districts. There are two zoning districts where group homes are allowable only as a conditional use, you have to be approved by the planning board. They are also permitted use in 10 zoning districts, so it's much more out there in different parts of our community as a permitted use. So again, that's group homes. Another type of, or situation for recovery and treatment can be under the title definition of community living arrangement. And that's interesting in the sense that a community living arrangement is really found in the definition of dwelling, in a single-family attached or detached dwelling. Normally we think of a dwelling for a single family or that kind of situation as going to be for a family to live in. But that definition has been expanded over the years because of legal, legal cases and legal situations to now include community living arrangements, where not only could you have a family, but you could also have a community living arrangement of under eight people with disabilities that's been approved or certified by the state. And that also could be group homes, foster homes, or intermediate care homes. And this is another point where I would bring up the issue of because these are folks that have disabilities, they're protected under the American Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. And that's an important factor to consider when elected officials and lawmakers think about regulating something that deals with someone with disabilities. You have to be very careful how you approach that. The other type of regulated addiction-type facility is an outpatient addiction treatment clinic. Lewiston regulates that through business licenses, again, in chapter 22. These clinics provide program or facilities operated for the purpose of and specializing in the care, treatment, and/or rehabilitation of persons suffering with addictions. And it's also, this involves people who are certified to distribute medication in that setting. Our licensing regulations in chapter 22 goes into great detail. And I included that in your supplemental information. You can see it's pages and pages of sections that get into great deal, great detail again into what the definitions are, application requirements, administration and approval either by the planning board, recommendation, and then on finally to the city council's approval. There's locational criteria, screening requirements, and so on.
Doug, do you want us to hold questions to the end or are we okay?
Probably at the end. I mean, I'll try to get through this part and maybe halfway through, I'll kind of take a pause and see if you have any questions or not. But I apologize for just the lengthy narrative on this.
People have questions, so I just didn't know if I should.
You just see hands going up, so, okay. One of the things, before I may take a pause and take on some questions, which I'd be glad to do. And I've already mentioned it a few times, but it's worth noting in all of these existing addictive treatment and recovery facilities that the group homes, community living arrangements, outpatient addictive treatment, all require state approval, certification, and licensing. Mentioned that before. That all the persons involved in the addiction treatment and recovery are considered disabled. And then the, these facilities must comply with the ADA and fair housing. So I'd be glad to take a moment, catch my breath, and you can.
So you answered one of my questions on that. I wanted to confirm that community living arrangements are indeed state-regulated use.
That's correct.
Does that get into the definition of what residential unit is? How many people live in, in there or whatever? Does that speak to that at all?
Yes and no. Through the Fair Housing Act, American with Disabilities Act, state statute, we have to allow group care facilities in single-family dwellings, no questions asked. And the state statute speaks to that and our language is basically verbatim to that effect. It says eight or fewer. You folks remember, we created definitions with respect to family, which basically a family is a family and no more than three unrelated people. So the family, we kept pretty broad and you can have a rather large family, it could be a family of one, it could be a family of 10, as long as there's no more than three unrelated people there. Because of this language here and ADA and fair housing issues, we have to allow in a group care, in a community living arrangement, we have to allow up to eight unrelated people in a facility.
So you're kind of laying the framework to discuss soberhousing, which, which are not licensed by the state too, and that's why it's a particular challenge here. Before, we would just say, as long as you get the state license and abide by that, and typically that's how we would regulate them?
Yeah, these facilities were in fact licensed, you know, by the state as some type of group care facility. Because there are group care facilities that exist out there that deal with, you know, substance abuse, intellectual issues, things of that nature. So if there was that type of licensed facility and, and they were operating under that, we, we wouldn't be having this discussion now. But they don't. And so we're trying to figure out, is this an issue? And we can answer.
Other questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilor Lysen. That's kind of the lead into the next part of what I wanted to talk to you about was, so now we have soberhouses are kind of new on the scene. They've been springing up all over the country. They're also called addiction recovery, also known as alcohol and drug-free houses. You can find probably a number of definitions, but one that I've just picked out to give to you is it's defined as a business operated on a residential premises tailored for people in recovery from substance abuse disorders that may or may not be occupied under the definition of a family as defined by the zoning code. And that is not a state-licensed housing facility.
Yes. Whose definition is that?
That is taken, I believe, from, because we don't have a definition at this point right now. I believe I took that from the city of Stanford, which is something I was going to discuss in a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and it is very similar to a number of other definitions that I looked into, has some of the same components. So last year, Journey House, which is a sober house, opened up on Oak Street here in Lewiston. And with the opening of the Journey House, a number of questions and issues came up because of that. Some of those, again, we've already kind of touched base on, that it wasn't regulated or licensed by the state. Questions as if, as with, for example, do soberhouses have the same land use designation as a single-family dwelling? Kind of not sure about that, or a community living arrangement? Would a sober house require a change of use permit? If it's still a single family, under the umbrella of a single family, does it require a change of use? If it requires a change of use, that can get into some level of reviewing of an application or a site plan or something that we have something that code enforcement and planning can look into. Do the ADA and F, does the American with Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act regulations preclude the city from making licensing and inspection requirements or land use regulations that might limit soberhouses? And another question that, among others, does the city have the right to license and inspect soberhouses? One of the driving things that I think is of a concern either to the fire department or code enforcement and planning is if it's not regulated, which is not at this point, it's under the umbrella of a dwelling. It can be anywhere within a single-family neighborhood or dwelling. We'd have no right to enter the premise for inspection. So that's a kind of a really concern, that has been expressed as a concern. It's something we want to ask you as, as a council, what your level of concern is. So I talked about those kind of things. Yeah, single-family homes can be purchased and set up by the owners or operators under the premise that they have the legal right to operate under the ADA disability laws without discrimination. But as you can understand, and I think as a single-family owner, I've wondered what would happen if one of, if a sober house opened up next to me in my neighborhood, or it's been, it's been of concern to people across the country who have raised concerns about their property values or public safety issues without the benefit of any type of public hearing process. That again, just to repeat over and over again, that this, that neither the state of Maine or the city at this point has an established licensing program for soberhouses. And so that's something we want to be opening up discussion potentially on that. I've already covered the legal issues a fair amount. I'm not sure I really need to keep harping on that or discussing that. But again, these folks with addictions are considered to be disabled and therefore they're covered and protected under the American Disabilities and Fair Housing Act. So part of, I guess, the assignment was to look at soberhouses, what's happening across the country. It is of concern that the state has not developed any type of licensing requirement or performance standards that you might want to see happen. And they are, there are other states that do that, but we are not there yet. So we did look into the city of Sanford, that last year they passed an ordinance that requires the licensing and inspection of soberhouses. And they also, in their ordinance, call it alcohol and drug-free housing, but it's the same thing. I, I provided a list of some of the premises and purposes of Sanford's ordinance. They, they want to see reasonable accommodations made for people with disabilities. Something that I think of significance to mention is that in all cases, renting housing to another person requires a license. For our purposes, we're just talking about renting housing for a sober house, but in any case. All housing must meet property maintenance code, fire code, zoning code, and other building codes. That limiting proximity of licenses of the same kind is reasonable to prevent exploitation of people and lessen negative impacts to the community and the facilities. They have a 500-foot separation from soberhouses in their ordinance. They're interested in protecting the residents living in those living situations from exploitation. And again, without any oversight or regulation, that, that's a problem in other parts of the community or potentially here that you have a manager of a sober house, but it's not clear if they're, are they going to be following house rules? And, you know, people who are recovering from addiction can be vulnerable and susceptible to exploitation, and that's a great concern. Another point is maintaining adequate health and safety standards for the protection of the residents and the neighborhood and ensuring adequate fire, police, and emergency response and protection. And then facilitating appropriate emergency response for residents who may require assistance during an emergency. So in conclusion, you know, we all, it's no, it's a known fact that the impacts that addiction is having in our community, in the state, and in the country. And we need to continue supporting the treatment and recovery of addicted individuals. But that doesn't necessarily preclude the need for the city to protect residents from life, safety issues, and possibly exploitation due to lack of oversight. Laws have been passed that protect disabled persons and provide them with reasonable combinations. And that any new licensing requirements or land use regulations should be considered very carefully that they are susceptible to challenges. And it's a, it's a tricky area to wade into on regulating soberhouses, especially here within the state without regulations by the state. Licensing would seem to be a reasonable method to protect public safety while not infringing on the rights of disabled persons. infringing on the rights of disabled persons. One of the things that starts coming up when we evaluate what Sanford's done, we, I had a good discussion with their community development person who's overseeing this, but again, in more detail is the Sanford's ordinance, verbatim, of what they, what they approved. And there, there could be some concern, and I've read about other places in the country where if you apply very strict fire code, that it might involve, say, putting in sprinklers, and that's been tested and challenged by sober houses as just one example of being careful what you, how you, if you want to regulate or restrict or license this, how you go about it, and maybe what is the driving, what's the most important thing to be taking care of? If it's life-safety issues, then fire inspections seem reasonable, but how far do you go? So, I hope I was able to provide some kind of what's our current situation is, what we're facing with sober houses here, and look forward to hearing some of your thoughts and concerns.
Councilor Lyson.
Thank you, Mayor. The, has Sanford been challenged on their standards at all by any of the sober houses that have been established there? Based on ADA and-
I think they initially were, but I think it may have been dropped.
I think it was Bitterford, actually.
Same group and same issues, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and I think in both cases, it may have been dropped. There was pending lawsuits, but I'm not sure what the outcome was.
So, I mean, I, obviously, it's a slippery slope to say, you know, are we over-regulating them? But it would seem to imply that you can't, I mean, there was a quote about doing anything, basically, but you're, you're thinking that we can do some things as long as there's a reasonableness factor on safety, welfare of the community type of thing?
Yeah, as much as I am certainly not an attorney, but one of the, looking at researching and trying to get as much information as I could in the time I had available, there was a good joint statement from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and Department of Justice that talked about a number of kind of Q and As about sober houses and how they're, the legality of them, and one section in particular referred to state and local governments' enforcement of neutral requirements regarding safety, licensing, and other regulatory requirements governing group homes, sober houses, that do not violate the Fair Housing Act, so long as the ordinances, licensing perhaps, are enforced in a neutral manner, they do not specifically target group homes, and that they do not have an unjustified discriminatory effect on persons with disabilities in these type of homes. So, I believe it can be done. I'm not an attorney, but I think in our case, it would seem like modest licensing to try to get people to let themselves be known to us and be able to have some reasonable application requirements that they would have to abide by. A lot of places use group, there's a set of rules that they're supposed to abide by. It's going to be self-regulating, but that you would be able to know who these folks are, get a license, and be able to at least get in and inspect for the kind of things that we would want to see in other rental-type situations of egress and fire safety, things like that.
One of the fires' concerns is that typically, and part of the reason we have the definition of a family plus three, was if you had more than four unrelated people, from a fire code perspective, it becomes a lodging house. And to Doug's point, looking at a supervised alarm system, at some point, you're looking at a sprinkler system. Well, community living arrangements don't need that, you know, group homes. So, at what point does a sober house need that? And, and people with a substance abuse disorder, that is a disability, that, you know, so there's a lot of definitions that kind of overlap, but none of them are getting you to the same point as how you regulate this, and that's, that's the challenge.
Follow-up question on, you said the state doesn't have any regulatory framework right now. Was there even a bill proposed in this session?
I tried searching, and nothing came up.
There wasn't anything? Okay. Because I think, obviously, we're going to have to go it alone, I think, because this is too, too big of an issue to wait for the state, because it may take a couple of years if we go through the state, or expect the state to kind of do it. So, I, I, like the issue with marijuana, I do think we need to get some of the operators and people in, you know, who are doing treatment-type facilities to participate in the development of this as well. I know that's more work, but I think it makes some sense, because they'll know, and there's a number of groups out there that are looking into it. Some of them are here as well today.
Councilor Ray.
I think I have four questions. Can you define a lodging house again?
You want the exact definition?
Close enough is good.
That is so.
Well, it's, the easy answer is anything other than a family plus three. So, if it's four or more unrelated people, then you're looking at a lodging house, or more than four unrelated people.
Is that the same as a boarding house?
Yes.
Okay. So, those are Congress. Do we have anything anywhere that is similar to this Sanford provision number two, in all cases, renting housing to another person requires a license?
No. So, we license lodging establishments, lodging houses, hotels, motel lids. That's all we license for any type of living arrangement, per se.
Okay.
As the council knows, there's a rental registration committee that's discussing what we should be registering. That conversation is leaning towards establishments or dwellings with three or more units. So, it's not likely that that would factor into these if people are occupying single-family homes, so we wouldn't know. To Doug's point, we're aware of one sober house right now. There could be a dozen in the community. We don't, we don't know.
Fourth question or statement? Let's go statement. If we're looking to adopt something similar in defining an alcohol and drug, ooh, alcohol and drug-free house, I would just personally request, because we've heard it a few times, that we talk about substance use disorders, not substance abuse disorders. We've heard from at least three different groups, I think, at this point, that that is preferred terminology, and so I just would love to see that reflected in our use.
Councilor Joy.
You mentioned you checked with Sanford. Did you check with Bangor or another big city, Portland, with regards as to sober houses and their regulation?
In my discussions with Ian Housed, who is with Sanford, he mentioned that there, and I, I've got my notes somewhere else, but he mentioned, I believe it was Bangor, maybe Bitterford, there were some other places that are actively working on this, and I can certainly reach out and find out what else is happening out there.
I believe in Portland, and there, I think they're working on something, but one of the issues that Portland had historically was their definition of family. I don't want to say it was definition of family, so, you know, don't take me verbatim here, but they had an occupancy of 16. And that came to light with the Noi Street fire, where basically, they were allowing up to 16 people occupy structures. And that's been, I, a conversation, when we first came to our discussion about a sober house, we, I had a conversation with some folks in Portland, and that was basically one of the things that they were trying to figure out, was, well, great, we allow 16 people in a building as a matter of right, unregulated, and that certainly has some consequences. Where they've gotten, we would have to check.
Okay. So, would it be advantageous for us to stay in contact or contact Bangor and to see how far they are? They may be at the same point as we are, or they may have figured different areas that they can adapt that is lawful and, and might help us out. I'm not sure. We might even help them out.
Yeah, no, I think it's always good to reach out and, you know, cross-discuss what each, what each other community's doing.
Right.
Glad to do that.
Because there was a clip on the news this afternoon at noon time with sober houses in Bangor, and the shortage, actually. And they had individuals interviewed on it. It wasn't anything as we're talking this evening, it was the availability, but still, it just brought up the thought that, you know, they're in the same position we are. How far ahead are they?
Yeah.
If they are.
Like we mentioned, we have a few contacts right now that we know of here in Lewiston, but that's almost inherent, and the situation is not knowing.
Right.
Trying to find that stuff out. But again, reaching out to other communities is definitely something we do.
Thank you.
Just to sort of follow up on what Councilor Joy was just saying, in terms of your contact with Sanford, how long have they had this ordinance in place?
I want to say June of last year, June, July, so it's-
About over a year, or we're talking like this past?
Less than, less than.
And how many sober houses do they have?
I'll have to find out that.
Okay.
I don't have that number.
So, if you could find that out, and then, did he say they were having any issues with the ordinance that they created?
He, it's kind of surprised me.
It sounded like Dave made reference to it.
I think the conversations I had were prior to them actually having the ordinance adopted, because they had some similar concerns, and there was issues of not making reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities. And both, I think, Bitterford and Sanford were raising that issue, and they were being challenged on it. I think that's why they've developed an ordinance at this point.
Okay.
I'm not sure how it works.
Right. What I was told, what it generally is functioning well, that they were, I was surprised to hear that they've had, you know, sober house operators come in and get their licenses, and they made themselves known. They weren't trying to just be that. So, at least that was a good impact that they had, that they were registering sober houses, licensing them, and inspecting them. That's something else we would want to be looking into. Again, if you look at the details of Sanford's, they refer to, I'm not sure exactly the terminology, but I think high degrees of fire safety, national fire safety-type codes, that that's where things start getting into very stringent requirements of sprinkler systems and other things that are, can be problematic. That was, that was, in my research, I found that that was other places in the country. There were challenges made, because it was felt that they were being discriminated against, that they were being required, a sober house would have to put in a sprinkler system for a huge expense, and they looked at that as a way to deter them from operating and being licensed.
So, if you could find out how many are in Sanford?
Mm-hmm.
And then, I also just, I don't see a reason why we should limit our research necessarily just to communities in the state of Maine. I mean, I feel like there are probably communities in New England who are doing this and possibly doing it, you know, well in terms of creating ordinance. So, if there's ways to sort of take a look at that, too. I mean, what, what would be helpful, I think, for us is maybe to look at, you know, communities who have, who have put these ordinances in place, and sort of like maybe a graph of sort of what each of those-
Some kind of chart of characteristics and things. I can tell you that Massachusetts has a state program.
Okay.
And I didn't get too far into that, but that was a good, relatively close-by New England example of a state regulating it, how they operate, how they operate, and how it translated to local level.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Councilor Mark.
I heard sprinkler system, you know, mentioned quite a few times. What's the current threshold to require sprinkler systems if you're building a new, building new, for instance? I know that most of these would probably be occupying existing locales.
Probably should know that, and I don't want to give you the wrong answer. I mean, certainly with a lodging house, I mean, it's clear, when it's a lodging house, you need to have a sprinkler system, supervised alarm system. There is a threshold with multifamily that, I don't know off the top of my head, but at a certain point with multifamily, you do have to have a sprinkler system and supervised alarm system as well. Part of it's the number of units, part of it's the, the height of the building, how many floors.
If you could get back to us with that answer.
Yeah.
And when you were talking about Sanford, was I hearing that sober houses were moving into the community before there was a ordinance in place?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I think it's a good idea to be looking at some sort of ordinance, putting regulation in place. I just want to make sure that it's not designed to be an attractor, to make Lewiston a destination for sober houses.
Anything else from the council? Are there folks in the audience who want to speak to this item? Sure, can you just step to the podium and give us your name and address? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie Poole. I am a drug and alcohol counselor, and I live over on Bridge Street. I appreciate the work that you put into the evidence that you presented tonight. My, my fear of, I didn't even know I was going to be here tonight, so, my fear of regulating such things is that it does kind of provide people with that us-and-them mentality. And I just have to say that addiction or recovery of any form happens in probably everybody's family. So, that being said, I feel like regulations are good, because we want to provide a safe community for everybody who resides in Lewiston. So, I just hope that people realize that addiction hits everybody, and it, so it's not really us-and-them. It's a really like, let's embrace people. I'd rather have a sober house than a drug house beside me, I guess. I want to look at it that way. Safety reasons, people that are serious about recovery and actually end up in a halfway house or go to a recovery house, they're looking for a better life, and they want to be taken seriously, and they want to be happy in life and embraced in a community instead of an us-and-them attitude. So, I guess I would just put that out there and just take that into consideration when you're talking about this, and just being very cautious and careful about promoting the us-and-them attitude, because probably 85% of the people here in Lewiston have struggled with addiction of some sort in their life, 100% probably is affected by somebody in their family. So, just be cautious about the us-and-them attitude, okay? That's basically what I'm going to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Rob Karabkin. I live in Portland. I wear a bunch of hats. I'm the co-owner of Recovery Connections of Maine. It's a drug and alcohol counseling clinic on Middle Street. I'm also the treasurer of the nonprofit Journey House Recovery, as well as a landlord who owns two sober houses that are currently being leased out to Journey House Recovery. One is the, is in Sanford. Journey House is based in Sanford. There's a couple, Eric Skilling, Crystal Wow. They started with a men's house and a women's house there. We started renting a house on Oak Street, right around the corner, where I was this afternoon. I bought a house in Auburn. We've got six women over there, and we just opened an eight-bed house in South Portland. That's for women. It, I think, I don't know, there's a lot to talk about this. One, there's a ten, I think there's a temptation to capitalize the S and the H in sober house, as if what we're talking about is a house that is anything but people who happen to be sober. And in the counseling clinic that I co-own, we have a poster on the wall of names of people who lived in your city who don't anymore because they're dead. And when you walk down Oak Street, many of the houses that you see, the people in there are not sober. And they're not sober because they have substance use disorders, and there's a good chance that they'll be dead. So, in my mind, when I think about walking down Oak Street, oh my God, of course I want sober houses. Because what's the alternative? Before I came over here, I spent a couple hours hanging out at this house on Oak Street and talking to our house manager there. Six months ago, he showed up at a detox drunk out of his gourd. He moved into our house about a week later. He's on social security income, so he has time. And after a few months, we made him the house manager. That means he's our eyes and ears in the house. He's not the boss. We have professional people who work with our organization who are the directors, but Sam's the manager. Sam had a big thing, a chick- Sam had a big thing, a chicken, he was cooking. He was happy. He's healthy. Another guy came home from work, uh, wearing a yellow vest. That guy had been holding it together until his wife left him a year ago and at that point, there wasn't much reason to stay sober and he was drunk every day. He would find pictures online of her going out with some guy and he'd see that guy and he'd beat him up and then your cops would have to arrest him. This guy hasn't gotten into an altercation since he got sober. That's largely because he lives in the house that my organization operates. That guy looked me in the eye and told me that we saved his life. I, I don't know. I, I guess I'm an emotional person because I have to admit that that touched me. I think, and I, I did my undergraduate in urban studies. I've thought a lot about urban planning. I'm not new to conversations like this. I, I think when we think about regulations, we should think about three things. The standards, what are the standards, the carrots and the sticks. And I think sometimes in a conversation like this, we sort of beeline to the sticks. I want to break it down a little bit because it's a more holistic picture than that. When it comes to the standards, I want to point you guys toward a group called the National Alliance of Recovery Residences. I flew out to Indianapolis a couple of months ago and spent three days with other recovery house leaders from around the country. Up until fairly recently, this work really was the Wild West. There were a million different kinds of houses. A church ran this one, a soup kitchen ran that one, a slumlord ran this third one. And in Florida, some of them were actually like drug houses, brothels that were being taken advantage of. And so what happened was recovery house leaders like me, at least I identify with the folks down there, said, we're gonna set standards. That became the Florida Association of Recovery Residences. That gave rise to the National Alliance of Recovery Residences. They're now on their third set of official standards. I'd encourage all you guys, go home, do your homework, National Alliance of Recovery Residences. Look up version three. That's what we're talking about. Journey house, every house, every standard, every time. So there are standards that are out there. And I joined the conference calls for NARS, uh, Policy Committee and it's a lot of people doing this around different state houses. I spent some time in Augusta. You certainly aren't the only community. And, uh, so I want to point to those standards. And then I want to talk about the idea of a carrot. Because it's not just about what you can't do. It's about what we need to have happen. I don't want another name on the poster that we have at the treatment center. Because it's not just that person's life. It's their mother, it's their father, it's their siblings. It's all the potential that they could have to, to live in your town and that they don't have because they're dead. And so let's talk about that. We would love to get along with your cops. I think we do. As far as I know, in the year that the house has been open, the Lewiston police have never been there. We'd love to get along with your Department of Health and Human Services. I don't know exactly what the municipal employees are who do social service work. Let's make that happen. Love to get along with your general assistants. We do in Sanford. Um, let's make that happen. Let's, let's, so that when you walk down the tree streets of Lewiston, let's work together. It's just a house of people who don't drink. I got a nice house in Portland with my fiancee. Guess what? We don't have drugs and alcohol there. It's a sober house. And that's how I want people to see it. Now, because this is a conversation about the stick, ostensibly, that's what planning is. That's what R3 and whatever else is. The key phrase from the Fair Housing Act is reasonable accommodation. See you nodding. Yeah. So the key word in that is reasonable. So the question is, what's reasonable? So what's reasonable for you guys, you got a bunch of Bates kids, they want to set up a frat house in your neighborhood, is totally reasonable for you to say, you can't have any more than three people who aren't related. You can limit the number of roommates so they're not throwing keg parties next to where your eight-year-old's trying to do her homework. It's not reasonable to expect folks with disabilities to necessarily be bound by that same limit because if they can't live in a house like this, there's a good chance that they're gonna live in a situation in which they're going to die. And I know that seems a little dramatic, but you tell that to the dead people. So that's a reasonable one, but here's what's not reasonable. Twenty-five people with one means egress. That's not reasonable. You guys got every right to shut that down. So if we're gonna talk about what's reasonable, um, life safety. I, I'm a Jewish liberal arts kid, like I don't actually know how to do plumbing. And that's okay, but that's why cities collect property tax dollars and hire people who know about buildings. And so come in, tell us if our building is safe. If it's not safe, guess what? We'll fix it. It doesn't need to be this like stick shaking thing. If, if, if we're, if we're behaving unreasonably, please tell us. We have donors, we'll fix the building. I own two of the buildings. My friend Scott owns two of the buildings. We have money. We will fix them if they're unreasonable. But I don't think it's unreasonable to have a home for people who are desperately trying to stay sober and put good lives back together. I know I've been talking for a while. I, I would just love to see a room like this of eight people who've been endowed by your constituents with the power over money and the fist of the municipality. I'd love to like work together to like keep people alive. Because right now, there's a lot of people dying. Uh, I know I keep saying that, but there's a lot of people dying. And, yeah, so I, I don't know. I think the, the last thing I want to say is that one of the stories I heard when I was hanging out there today, if anybody wants to come by, hit me up. I'll give them a heads up. It is their home. You can't just like barge into somebody's house. But if you'd like to come by, we'll find a time. They would love to host you. We have free coffee. But, uh, you know, I heard somebody say that, I invited Sam, our house manager, to come here tonight. And he said, no, I can't come because this couple that I'm friends with, their kid is sick over at Saint Mary's. And they've been sitting next to the kid's bedside and they need a few hours to like go home and take a shower. And they've asked me to just go over to Saint Mary's and sit next to the sick kid. And this is the guy, when he showed up six months ago, blew like a point four three. Like how is that even like possible? And now this couple trusts him to be there with their child because of the house. It's not just because of the house, but it's at least like a little bit because of the house. And like, help us do more of this. The reason that like they can't tell you where there are, where there are in town, as far as I know, our six beds on Oak Street are like it. Now, if there are more, great, but I don't know that they are. They don't know that there are. Let's like have, you know, so like the lowercase s, lowercase h, let's walk around Lewiston and see sober houses. That's all I got.
Does anyone else want to speak to this item?
I don't really know how to follow all of this.
Can you start with your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Cassandra Brown and I am a resident of Lewiston. I live on Horton Street. Which, as he says, is a tree street. Uh, I, I'm looking to basically do what like all of you guys are kind of here tonight to do as like a collaborated effort. Like, I'm, I, I don't want to sit here and talk about what hat I have or what I don't have, but you know what I noticed in Lewiston and Auburn? Is that we don't have enough of like platforms to network. What is really going on with us? Like, you know, I, I, I'm twenty-nine, I can say that much. I'm, I'm twenty-nine, so I, I see people around me. I see my friends, my best friends sit beside me on their phones all day. You know what they do? They network and they social media. Like, let's bring together like all of this and let's like collaborate and network and get info for you and your regulations and for your city and your people and all, and all of that because us, them, however you want to look at it. I mean, like every, it's, it's, it's something that just really needs to be brought to the light because I think just like what we have to offer now, and I mean like collaborated efforts between drug courts, pre-trials, IOPs, substance, everything from what, what, what we're offering for NA meetings to AA meetings. A personal project that I'm passionate, passionate about and forgive me because I talk fast. I failed public speaking in college. But, um, I want to create, um, a female group in Portland that collaborates with, um, you know, drug court and, and substance abuse counselors and things like that where it's hand-on, hands-on because like recovery and addiction, it's not just about like what our drugs of choice were or what anybody's anything because it's from shopping to shoes. I'm addicted to Nikes, you know, like, it's true. It, it, it's how our world is. But it, it's like, uh, I just want to provide more awareness. So I'm working on hands-on groups for women that are in recovery right now with a year's worth of sobriety that, um, like just want to show up for two hours and paint their nails, you know? Like I, I, I really want to provide a platform for everybody, like you, me, everybody of all different ages and whatever we are. Like whether we've been affected through our family members or whether we're personally addicts ourself. And I mean, it's, it's not about putting a label. It's just about like creating, like let's bring our city, Lewiston and Auburn, let's bring like to light how much we can really spread, like, look, we're suffering. We're walking down the streets where there's needles. I'm bringing my children where, you know, just things like, like, let's bring it to light and let's put a positive spin and let's do what we can do to like offer our community, like, just an awareness, like. So I, I really don't know how this even relates to you guys' regulations. But basically what I'm saying is like, the way that I transmit is freestyle recovery. That's how I look at, at anybody in the world, however we choose to deal, we're all, it's all a freestyle. It's not whether I show up to an NA meeting at night. It's not whether I go to a sober house because that's not necessarily what works. It's, it's just about like networking all that we have to like offer as a community because like I, I see as a twenty-nine-year-old, like I see, I see from all of this and I see what we can do, just little steps to just start providing information for you guys, you know? It is fair. You guys ask your town people to know what we have for sober housing, to know what we have for meetings, to know what we have for, for all of that. And, and honestly, unless you really like, there's no, there's no public information for that. So I just want to provide more of a spot to start reaching out and like saying, hey, like, come on, let's everybody join because we, we all have different hats offer, that we can offer so much, so that's, that's it. I don't know, but freestyle recovery, I guess. I will be in the community. You guys will see more of me.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Everly. I'm a resident of Lewiston on House Street. I'm inspired to speak today because my mom relapsed on the first. And last Tuesday, before I came in here, I saw my mom. I left her. I haven't been home since. And one of the last things she said to me is, Heather, this time I'm not gonna get out of it alive. And she, when I left, she said, don't leave. I'm gonna die. I'm gonna die. And my mom and other people that are striving for their recovery and who live with a substance abuse issue, they deserve to know that they belong here and they shouldn't feel like everybody hates me, everybody's looking at me and nobody wants to help me and there's nowhere for me to go to find a safe place, even if it's for myself and my disease. And I would really, really, it would mean so much to me if we could all come together and show people that live with substance abuses that they really do matter and that we want them to be here on this earth with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Somebody has really good perfume. My name's Melissa Dunn. I live at two fifty-four Blake Street. I'm a homeowner. I've been a community organizer in Lewiston's downtown for eight years or so. Every time I say that, I feel really old, but much of my work with community organizing, there's some people that you could organize, but then there's just some people that are not because they've fallen through the cracks. Some people dealing with mental health illnesses and not being able to qualify for case manager support because of their insurance changed. Some people dealing with, um, addiction, some people dealing with abuse, um, some substance users. Doing the work that I've done and hearing the stories that I've heard from folks, I really appreciate and value and respect low barriers for people to get access to the help that they need. It's critical. When we live in a system where we just don't have adequate healthcare for people and we live in a system where we literally have to work two and a half jobs just to maintain housing. I'm at my fifth job right now. And, um, and, you know, some folks with families or maybe discourse in their families, maybe they're healthy families, you know? We can't always make those assumptions. But I think what's unfortunate and what has plagued the downtown for a really long time is the bottom line of classism, economic inequality and painting poor people as the problem. Or that people that use substances or have substance use disorders are painted as the problem. And really, it's like a community issue. When you think of it, and I tell the story a lot, on this side of the river, from the old mill days, we were the poor side of folks. Auburn was like more well-to-do people. And that kind of has followed us here. I mean, we're like, kind of like the hub to everything, near public transportation and all these other things, resources and the community. So people are gonna come where like apartments and rents are cheap to be able to like survive. And even then, a lot of people end up homeless. We have a huge homeless issue, which we all know about. We have a shelter issue, which people know about. There's just not enough adequate housing, not enough shelter for people. But to have places that are specifically geared to helping people with substance use is really critical. But anyway, back to the old mill days, as poor people, it's very common that we suffer with generational trauma. Trauma from family that's like passed down and passed down. Most addiction is co-occurring, which folks should know that, where mental health use and addiction comes into play. And so when you think of all these things and all, like the, the roadblocks to healthcare and everything, you know, that just kind of prevents people from progressing to where they need to go in their journey. So they turn to what they know, you know, to cover their pain, self-medicate, whatever it might be. And these are people that shouldn't be condemned, you know, or told that they have to pull themselves up by the bootstraps. Addiction is a brain disorder. And when you're in the throes of it, it's really hard when you lack support, lack housing and all these other things to really be able to thrive. So places like Journey House, Sober Living, um, you know, there's, there's, they're, they're among people that know what it's like. And if they happen to use substances, you know, people are there to help support them and not ridicule them. So my ask to city council is when you're thinking about regulations, think about regulations that are low barrier to folks to be able to access services that they need. It's really critical. We're wanting a healthy Lewiston and this is the way we can do justice by ensuring that people feel. feel included, not only like where their housing is, but within community. Um, I think it's important that we embrace people for all their differences, where their identities intersect and where, um, and where maybe they're even struggling with some challenges. And, uh, I know for myself, being with community is, um, has helped me immensely to be where I am with my own trauma and things like that, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to be trying to, try to be really quick because I know it's getting late. My name's Lenaya Hawkins, I live on Maple Street. Um, I am a survivor of an addicted, abusive, broken home. I was lucky to have the resources when I came into my 19, late twenties, late teens, early twenties, to be able to get the mental health and support I needed to make better choices and break some of those cycles that run in families. When I started doing research about the opioid epidemic, growing up in Alaska, I will tell you, drinking is a huge problem up there. There's a reason for sober villages. It's because when it's long and cold and dark in winter and you don't want to go anywhere, what else can you do? This past, this past January, I lost somebody who came very close to being my brother legally to an overdose. He was an editor for the, um, University of Anchorage, the newspaper when he was in college there. He was a mentor for an online site called Pitch Horse. Gone to addiction because he didn't break the cycles that plagued his family the way they did mine. When I started doing my research about opioids and the epidemic we're dealing with in this country, I saw the, the usual, if you're, if you, um, are exposed to heroin, you will become addicted. So I grew up with this idea that the second you take these drugs, you're instantly addicted and you never break out of it. It wasn't until a couple of years ago at a summit where we talked about these issues that I learned that as many as 70% of people who at one time are addicted eventually stop either with help or on their own. And it crushed me. Because within a year of that, sit down and talk about that, I had broken up with somebody I dearly loved because I couldn't cope with his addiction. The whole thought process behind you take drugs, you become addicted, came from a study where they took rats and put them in a cage, one bottle with just water, one bottle with water with heroin. That's all that was in the cage was rats and bottles of water. They became addicted. A researcher came in about a decade later, I think, I'm not sure. And he's like, no, 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 this study is not, this isn't built right. He created what they, what he called Rat Park. There were dozens of rats, all the food they could want, all the toys they could want, everything they could want to survive and the same water bottles. Not a single rat became addicted because they had everything they need to not have a hole they needed to fill. The reason that places like Journey House and Group Homes work is because you're included where you've been excluded. You're welcomed into an environment where you aren't alone and where people understand. Regulation, yes, make sure these are plate, safe places that aren't overcrowded, that makes sense. But when you start regulating things to a place where there is no opportunity for that inclusion, we go right back to this epidemic we've already built and we make it worse. When I lost my brother, I learned about it a couple of months later and it killed me because I wasn't able to be there. The thought that came into my head was, who missed what warning sign? What wasn't done to help him? I'd like to see, when you go into the DHHS office and you're obviously struggling, just a quick 10-point ACEs test score. And then say, hey, wait a second, you're scoring a little high here. Is there anything you need that we can help you getting connect, connected with? Now, I realize our DHHS workers are already overburdened. Simple 10 questions and a route to resources could make a huge difference, not just in Lewiston, but in Maine and across the country. Safe, healthy, not overcrowded housing, good. More exclusion and us versus them, very, very bad. Journey House, being right in the downtown is great, it's close to resources. If we start saying we don't want them next to our house or we don't want them next to our school, that means that they're out where they don't have access to resources and where the temptations become much, much easier to fall prey to. So please, think, remember, these are people, these are lives. You may not interact with them today, but at some point you probably will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everyone for sharing their stories. And I learned of some new resources that, um, I hope city staff and other counselors will look at. I think as I'm evaluating, um, what's been presented to us, and I thank you Doug for their research that you did, it sounds like these folks are striving for health and safety and I, my interest is in preserving that. Um, it does seem like there are resources out there that could really help us with that. Um, and I just want to acknowledge, um, everyone who shared tonight because that cannot be easy to talk about these experiences and they bring a lot of, um, informed opinion to us, I think.
Counselor Bean.
Well, I just want to thank all of you who are, uh, working so hard, uh, to help, help people. And I thank you for the information that you brought to us. I do want to, um, um, I don't know, assure you that, um, not only I, but I, 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 I hate to speak for everyone, but I, I get a feeling that this council, well, I've worked with them for a while and I know them. And, uh, the people who make the, or, or brought to us some ideas for regulations. It's unfortunate we use the word regulation because I'm, I know these people are, are coming to us with a health and safety view and with a hope that we can make these, these, uh, your, your places, the places where you work and, uh, where, where people you love live, uh, make them better. And also I'm on the grant committee, um, uh, for the, and not just that, we get a whole lot of money from the federal government, especially this year. But, uh, people work so hard to, to make sure that the nonprofits that help people in our community have, well, don't have the money they need necessarily, but so hard to, uh, try to be even and, and, and fair. And I know, uh, and we have people on the board who do run, uh, safe houses and sober houses and probably not a sober house, but, uh, other houses for, for people, um, uh, who are trying to, uh, uh, make their lives better. So, um, uh, you, you, you're speaking to, uh, speaking to the choir. Uh, I know that you have receptive ears here on the council, that we understand. We probably don't understand everything about addiction or, uh, all, you know, all, everything that has to do with it, but, but we certainly, uh, are willing to learn and we, we do have a, a really basic, good understanding of, of the problem. And also I have to say, it's, it's over all socioeconomic levels. It's not just, I know poverty probably makes it a little harder, but it, it's, it's everywhere. Um, that, you know, people, uh, can become addicted to all kinds of substances. So, uh, rest assured, um, certainly, at least this year, you're, 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 we're friendly, uh, you're, you're talking to friendly people here. Okay?
Any further discussion? Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion to adjourn? No, because it's worship.
Well, actually you might do one just to be safe. Keep Kathy happy.
So I have a motion by Counselor Lyson, second by Counselor Ray, all in favor?